Good evening. At this point, it's October 21st of 2025, and the board will be going into executive session, and we will return from that into open session. Thank you. Also, good evening. This is the board, the select board meeting of October 21st. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by the Foxborough Cable Access once we return. Thank you.
Move it to move into executive session.
Move? Yep. Okay, move, there was a motion to move into executive session?
Second.
Roll call?
Mark, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Bill, yes?
Amy, yes.
Debbie, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll be back. Welcome back to the regular session of the select board meeting for October 21st, 25. Just as a reminder, this meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by the Foxborough Cable Access. Do we have anybody here for citizens input?
Pledge.
Oh, pledge, sorry.
Chief.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, citizens input. Anybody? Nobody online? Okay. Well, we have to wait for the license for the hearing to open back up.
We can do the planning board.
Sure. 7:05, planning board. Would you guys like to come forward and talk to us?
So just to clarify, there's a vacancy. Tracy Vasili has moved out of town, so there's now an opening on the planning board. And Tom Murphy has been the associate member now for, I don't know how many years, quite about five years. So the way it typically works with the planning board is the associate member moves on up. So there isn't a full member of the board here to open the meeting formally, but the appointment, joint appointment can still occur with the members that are here.
And we did take a vote at our last meeting, and we unanimously approved Tom.
Microphone.
So we're asking for the blessing of the select board to appoint Tom as the permanent member, and I believe he has to run at the next election for the... And are there any other associate members? No.
No, now there'll be an opening for anybody interested to apply. There would be an opening for an associate member on the planning board.
Very good.
You want to say anything?
No, I'd like to say to the board, I appreciate the opportunity. I've been doing it for a few years now. I enjoy doing it. I like working with these folks and look forward to at least going till May.
And you're currently the chair of the EDC as well, the Economic Development Committee, right?
Is there a motion?
Yep. Motion to appoint Tom Murphy to the planning board for a term to end May 3rd, 2026.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You guys vote in favor too?
Do.
It's a joint appointment, so great.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Good luck.
You finally got your promotion.
I know, finally. Now he's gonna have sons. Let's do some action, because we only have a few minutes.
Motion to approve a one-day beer and wine license application for a tapped beer truck to host an event at Nomady Farms Campground, 72 West Street, on October 25th, 2025, and October 1st, 2025, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m.
Second.
Just as a point of clarification, didn't they come to us already, were those for other dates?
Yeah.
This year?
They did, they're just adding on next weekend and the following weekend.
Okay. And they've been doing it up to this point, so these are like extending?
Yep.
Past, okay. No issues with the, with the chief's?
No.
Okay. So motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
Motion to approve National Grid to install pole box over existing underground primary at South corner of Abbey Lane and Windsor Drive and wire from there up Abbey Lane to end at the cul-de-sac.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve National Grid to install, install one J.O. pole on Washington Street beginning at a point proximity 950 feet southwest of the central line of the intersection of Washington Street, Patriot Place. National Grid is proposing to install a new utility pole, P dot 62 dash 50, and AMI EMR for AMI FAN project on P, is that page 62 to 50, Washington Street?
Yep.
Yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Still good?
Yep.
Okay. Motion to approve a memorial bench in memory of Billy Wilson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the $1,200 donation for the memorial bench in memory of Billy Wilson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve a memorial bench in memory of Richard A. Hogan Jr.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve the $1,200 donation for the memorial bench in memory of Richard A. Hogan Jr.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept a donation in the amount of $1,521.64 by Gary Whitehouse for the Veterans' Day Celebration Lunch.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's too bad we could have thanked you while he was there in front of us.
Okay.
Okay. Motion to approve select board meeting minutes from October 7th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's now on about 7:05, so we can resume the...
7:15.
7:15.
No, it's, it's, in that, at one point it was 7:15, but now on the computer it says 7:05.
No, 7:05 was the planning board appointment.
That's a joint one, yeah.
Page to a date and time last meeting.
Yep, yep.
It's my fault.
You're right, you're right. Town manager?
Sure, go ahead. Just a reminder that the town meeting is scheduled for this Monday night at 7:00 p.m. at the high school, so hopefully many residents will show up, including our firefighters eligible to vote here in town, so that we can have at least a quorum. In new news, the Senate, Massachusetts Senate passed the auditorium legislation on October 16th, and now it's on to the House of Representatives. So it's whipping through the state at a great pace, so we're thrilled to hear that, and we appreciate Senator Feeney and his team working, believe it or not, it has been a huge effort, even though it's the second time around. It had to go through law, the legal side, and get all sorts of certifications, so there's been a lot of back and forth in the past month or so, so we're thrilled to learn of that passing. Our health department is sponsoring a mammogram van to come to town hall on November 13th that's in coordination with the Dana-Farber Cancer Institute to do mobile breast cancer screening right here at the town hall parking lot. Folks should sign up, so please go to the website, on our website, or call the health department to make sure you're pre-registered. The hours are from 7:00 a.m. until 3:15, so it's a great opportunity for our residents to get screening right here in town. A reminder that there's a financial summit for the school committee, AdCom, and select board on December 2nd at 5:30 right here in this building, and we hope that residents will attend or tune in to watch, because it will show, outline the upcoming fiscal year and provide good insight into what's ahead. Our health director, Matt Brennan, will be serving on a panel at the Public Health Excellence Day at the State House next Thursday, actually this Thursday, so we acknowledge that for him. It's a reminder that short-term rentals are prohibited by zoning here in Foxborough, as is selling of parking spaces unless it's a legally permitted commercial parking lot. And there'll be an employee appreciation event the morning of November 13th. Town Hall will open at 9:00 a.m., so all you guys, make sure you register for the employee appreciation breakfast at the community center. We have two grants that have been granted to the Foxborough Police Department. One is for $24,000 through the Edwin Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program, and it's going to support the acquisition of ballistic shields, enhancing officer safety, and operational readiness. So we're thrilled to receive that grant. They also got another grant for $17,564 through the Executive Office of Public Safety and the Office of Grants and Research for municipal road safety grants. So congratulations to our police department. I think I've already mentioned this, but there's a Veterans' Day ceremony at 11:11, at 11:00 a.m. at the community center, and obviously it sounds like there'll be a lunch offered afterwards for, paid for by Gary Whitehouse, so we're thankful for that. Coming soon is a new Fox Alerts program. It's the Foxborough's Mass Notification System, so you might see flyers through town hall and whatnot. You're not late yet, but there is a website you can go to to just look up what it is. It's, this is a shortened version, it's tinyurl.com/foxalertsinfo. But stay tuned for that, and for residents at home, this will be an opportunity to sign up to hear if, say, there's a water main break, or an active shooter situation, or a whole gamut of information, from community information to emergency information. So we, we hope that folks will opt in. It does require registration in order to be part of the program. And we are still waiting for the Foxborough Cable Access Show to go live with Mark Craig and Chris Gallagher, providing updates on the community center and DPW building construction. I believe those are going, that's going live this week, Katie said. And we have two, two job opportunities. We have a program coordinator with the Little Wreckers program through the Wreck Department, that's part-time, and then we have a Tree and Parks Division laborer slash driver available. And that's all I have for today.
Five minutes?
Selectman's update?
Yep.
Selectman's update?
Sure, you want to do your update, or your...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great. So I wanted to take an opportunity to acknowledge two people that we recently lost in our community, Bob and Marna Lucas. Both went to Foxborough High School in the 60s, both contributed to our town. Bob was a Navy veteran, also a longtime retired Foxborough firefighter. Marna was a supervisor for the food services for the Foxborough Public Schools. We just wanted to send our condolences to the entire Lucas family and take a moment. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything? Selectman?
Just a reminder that Halloween, this coming Saturday is the Halloween Parade, and Deb and I have volunteered to be judges for the costume.
I'm told.
Again, we had a blast, the first time I did it was last year, we had, we had a blast. It was a lot of fun. Deb, obviously Deb is, that's old hat for her, but we, it was nice for you to just be a judge and walk around and enjoy, enjoy the kids and everything, so just, I'm sure Wreck is blasting that all out. Everybody knows it's, it's happening, but just, just a reminder. That's all I have.
I stopped by the resource fair on Saturday. Yes, I know you were there. Very well attended. The parking lot was packed. There was a lot of opportunities to meet with the local groups and some other entities that were there offering information that would be helpful to Foxborough residents. They did a great job. The, the place was full, the information was flowing, and people seemed really receptive.
Yes. Yep. And we're getting pumpkins delivered tomorrow to town hall so that they could be carved, so you'll see the pumpkins around the common as the Wreck Department does every year, so I think we're getting 11 pumpkins delivered, so.
So you're gonna, well, you'll be carving a pumpkin, right?
Yeah. Nobody wants me carving a pumpkin, but there, there are pumpkin, there's some stiff competition here in town hall between departments. I know the health department takes it very seriously, so there's, there will be some pumpkins decorated here at town hall and put out on the common for this weekend.
Good luck.
Thanks.
We've got a couple minutes. Anybody want to tap dance?
We don't have anything else.
We have nothing else.
There's nothing else.
That's what happens when Katie goes on vacation.
I mean, you could do the common vitrular and entertainment, that's not tied to the alcohol.
Okay.
That's no public...
I mean, if you wanted to.
Where is it?
What do we got? We got about a minute.
Or we could just relax.
Yeah, where is it?
Is it 5:02?
No, she did it to a specific time and date, so.
4:02.
I mean.
4:02.
But I didn't know if she already had something booked at 7:05, so I was afraid to do a double up.
I think we'll just wait till we do all three of them in a row?
Yeah.
But who would have thought we'd have like nothing on the agenda?
Invite the gentleman to come on up.
Yep.
Yeah.
Would you guys like to come up?
As soon as we hit 7:15, we're going.
Thanks.
Do you have enough for the board? Okay.
Good, how are you today? Good. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good challenge.
It already looks great.
From GoGetIt.
Well, we're gonna be there for the ribbon cutting, right?
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you so much. Okay, appreciate it.
Here we go, 7:15. All right, or 7:15, you want to introduce yourselves, and we'll start from there.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and other members of the select board. Brian Early with Patriot Place Craft Group. We're here tonight to introduce you to the folks from Angels Cafe. They're going to be, hopefully, well, I think regardless, going to be taking over the former Axel and Byrne space at Patriot Place. Angels Cafe is a very successful restaurant operation in the town of Sharon. This will be their second location, and so we're here to, to meet the, the owners and management team. To my left is Eriz Haz, he is the business consultant to Angels Cafe and their expansion. And to my right is Ohad Angel, who is the founder and owner of Angels. You're gonna hear Ohad's story of moving to this country, opening up a restaurant, becoming a very successful restaurant operator. We met with, with Ohad and his team back in early 2025, over at the location in Foxborough, and we just fell in love with the concept. We knew we were gonna have this opportunity to transition Axel when Sean Olson let me know that he was gonna be retiring. So tonight is about the transfer of the all liquor license from Axel and Byrne to Angels Cafe, but I guess more importantly is to meet a new operator of a business in Foxborough, Patriot Place, who I think you'll all, you know, grow to really enjoy what they serve, how they, they operate. Their orange juice is second to none.
Loving their orange juice.
Love the orange juice. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Ohad, and I can tell you, you know, his story from Israel to the United States and becoming a very, very successful operator, so.
Hi, everybody.
Just one, one thing before that.
Yes.
This is just a reminder that this is a continuation of a public hearing from October 7th, 2025. That's why we're not opening as a new thing. It was open and continued until now.
Thank you for that accommodation as well. Appreciate that.
So hi, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
So I born, no, joking. So I came here like 14 years ago. All my life I worked in kitchen, like restaurants. I didn't like the food so much. And then we took a step, me and my brother, and we decided to open like the cafe. It was like really, really tough on the beginning, but we put like really all what we can, like with ingredients, and, you know, with the time, like people really like it. I assume we paid them a little bit to come, but really like it, so the business is pretty good. Like, you know, like I thought all the time to open another location, I didn't find the right place until, that, that, that's the goal, like to be in such, such a place like this, it's kind of a dream. And it's came true. And now we're going to open like, woo! We're gonna open there, really good food, like we have salad, breakfast, everything really fresh. I know everybody said it, but I really do it, like fresh lemon juice, olive oil, orange juice. We fresh squeeze like everything there. We do everything, everything, everything from scratch, like it's pretty good food. And we're gonna do it.
And is your other operation, does it, is it full liquor license and everything as well?
So the liquor, it's small part of my menu, like we're gonna do liquor license, just like cocktails, things like that. It's not like full bar or nightclub, even that I want it, but it's not. We got liquor license in Sharon as well, a few months ago. We didn't start serve liquor license because we want to do it at the same time and professionally, you know, just like this, and we busy, we'd open this location, so I hold it, and we're gonna do it.
Where are you located in Sharon?
In the center.
Right, I, I, that's what I thought. There isn't much in Sharon, so that's what I figured, that's what it had to be.
Hey, hey, there's a lot in Sharon.
Yes, yes.
You came from Sharon, you're not in Sharon.
Not, there is not so much in Sharon.
Yeah. No, but you know something?
You saw the fire department, really nice.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Well, there's that little corner, it always has some interesting, interesting little, little places.
Actors, it's not customer, it's actors.
Yeah.
They're not real customer. It's look busy.
What are, what are your hours gonna be here?
So here it's gonna be probably like around 8:00 to 8:00. Sharon, we work 7:00 to 5:00.
Yeah.
Daily.
And the, it's, for right now, the beverages, the alcoholic beverages, they have listed, is that?
More or less, that's what you're gonna be, yeah.
More or less gonna be. Well, this type of, this type of food is, it's not really like when someone's gonna come in and say, okay, I want to have a beer, or gin and tonic. Like you, these, these drinks are really interesting.
You see, I feel that you're gonna be my customer.
Yeah. Oh, listen, I'm half Greek, honey, I'm gonna be up there. Like, I'm looking at the food, I'm like, I'm like, oh, I'm gonna pronounce it wrong, but the shakshuka?
Woo! Everybody pronounce that wrong.
Yeah.
You're good.
Yeah, very interested in that, so.
Serious.
We'll have to, we'll have to make a field trip up there after.
Potential customer, I said. I recognize it.
Yep, absolutely.
I've eaten at your restaurant many times.
I saw you, I told you, Brian, already.
Oh, you've gone to one in Sharon?
I have been.
Of course.
Sharon, it's great.
As you know, I grew up in Sharon and...
But you don't come?
No, no. Whenever I meet anybody, always Angels Cafe. When I say, where do you want to meet? It's Angels Cafe. I've eaten there dozens of times. The food is outstanding.
Thank you. We buy stop and shop, things like that, but. The delivery is super fast.
In the, in the back door and out the front door.
Come on, run.
By the way, this is exactly what I was worried about tonight.
No, no, quiet. I don't do it.
It could be a stand-up comic.
Yeah.
Who oversees the alcohol and things like that? You?
No, we have like certified, we're gonna do. Of course, we did like...
We're certifying all of the managers, we're in the process. We already have four who are tip certified, but I want anybody who can do this, that speak the language enough, the serve safe, the choke serve, the tip serve, and the allergy, so slowly but surely, we get them, before we open, we'll have planning. Okay. Yeah, we also want to add, we would like to add it as a destination place, so for Patriot Place, a lot of people happen to be there, and they look for a good place to eat. The difference is, and I think we're gonna do it with Brian and his team, we'll market ourselves in a way that people will come from the center. You guys, even if you're not gonna be at Patriot Place, you want to eat a good breakfast or something that the Patriot Place don't offer, this is what we want to add to the Patriot Place story, a different kind of healthy breakfast and healthy lunch and salads, things that many of the other places don't have.
Brian, is there any concern, I mean, because really, the area is not a breakfast food area up there, so obviously getting the name out there and people knowing what it is.
So it's a couple things, and I, you know, we've wanted to have the right breakfast destination, and as Eriz mentioned, there's a built-in fan base with this. You know, if you were to, if we were to be looking at a, a new restaurant concept that no one was aware of, I'd be concerned. But many people, you know, up and down 495, Franklin where I'm from, we know Angels. So that's, that gives me some comfort in terms of the ability to kind of grow their brand. But secondly, we're getting tremendous demand from the healthcare center specifically for breakfast. There's a lot of procedures, they don't have a food offering. You know, Baristo has, has a breakfast offering, but nothing is as broad as this, and I, and I think weekends are just gonna be fabulous.
Yeah.
We must have traffic from the hotels, too, looking for breakfast.
True. You know, the, you know, 28 has a, a full service breakfast, Ohad, I mean, you don't love it, but, you know.
Don't agree.
And the Hilton Garden really does, they have, you know, breakfast sandwiches that are wrapped up, you can take to go. But I think, you know, if you're at the hotel for two days, you're gonna want another option, right?
Sure.
And the hotels are just, you know, they're doing wonderful. They're really, you know, their occupancy is over 74%, so we could not be happy with them. So this is, there's, I think it's, build the right one, and people will come, and this is the right one.
Well, just an observation, too, I mean, the prices are very reasonable. You know, nowadays...
We stop like this, we just want to catch you.
That's a smart, see, I was gonna say, smart concept. And, and the only other thing I was gonna say is that, you know, with World Cup coming...
Yes.
I mean, that's...
It's coming.
It's...
Only aware about the craziness.
Don't worry, Brian, it's coming, it's coming, right? But, um...
Walk on it.
I'm not concerned.
Chiefs like, I'm not concerned.
I was gonna say, I didn't even think of it. The Chiefs are like, not all of this, and it's not coming, right? Because the Chiefs have put, yeah, it's way too much, you know, not, not for, and I don't mean this, this isn't a political statement, but when he says we'll just move it to another location, I'm like, my first thing in my head was like, do you know that all these people, and like the Chiefs have been planning this for years? This isn't like, we're gonna move it to another location.
It's coming, we know that.
But I mean, it's, that's kind of advertises somewhat of an international...
I want to be in it, I want to be all over the world.
Yeah, yeah. And like, when you look at this, like, you know, just the whole Mediterranean spin makes you think international and...
I think also, I think also, like, serious, I, I think this food like rise right now, and I think like, it's more than just like, you know, it's like when you go to place like my cafe now, you feel the atmosphere, like it's, it's really kind of different. It's not just food or drink, it's like the character.
Takes after you.
A character?
Vibes, it's a whole vibe.
Right. But yeah, I, I think it's really good for everybody.
Good.
Great.
Any entertaining motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Roll call.
Is that a roll call?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Mark, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Billy, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is that a roll call?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Mark, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Billy, yes.
Amy, yes.
Debbie, yes.
Okay, motion to approve the application for a transfer of license for an on-premise annual all alcohol beverage license from Olson Restaurant Group, Foxborough LLC, doing business as Axlamber and Barbecue. Two sixty-seven Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass. To Angels Cafe of Foxborough LLC, doing business as Angels Cafe.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Do I just make a motion for this? Okay, motion to approve an annual entertainment license application for Angels Cafe of Foxborough LLC, doing business as Angels Cafe located at two sixty-seven Patriot Place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none?
Motion to approve a common, I always miss.
Victual.
Victual. License application for Angels Cafe of Foxborough LLC, doing business as Angels Cafe, located at two sixty-seven Patriot Place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none?
Welcome to Foxborough.
Thank you so much. Gonna be good friend. After the first delivery.
Quite excited about a restaurant company, very excited. Can't wait to try it.
Thanks, Brian. Thank you. Good luck. Oh, when, when is the potential opening?
I guess not yet, then that's it.
Oh, you got everything you wanted.
Four to six, four to six weeks.
Four to six weeks, okay, great, thank you.
They may open without their license.
Okay.
Yeah, we will, if we ready, we want to open.
Oh, without the liquor side of things.
Yeah.
Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Have a good evening.
Should, should be worth the conversation, isn't it?
Legal mall for Katie.
Yeah, that's right.
What's next?
Fire grant.
What's next?
Is there anything else we can skip? Mike, come up chief.
Stuff to follow.
Hey, we're almost right on time too.
Do you have that?
We got a filibuster till seven forty-five anyway, so we have someone, Victoria Allen coming in to meet you, our new substance abuse coordinator. Supposed to be in an eight, but she's coming in on a rush because we.
It's so early, oh, good.
Yeah, she's coming in early.
I thought this was a packed agenda. So, good evening, happy to be here. So I, good news is. Who are you? I'm Mike Keller, her morning sideline. So, good news, we got a, a grant for firefighter staffing. We got two grants actually we're here to present tonight. The big one's the firefighter staffing grant, it's 1.4 million dollars to hire firefighters, five firefighters for the next three years. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about the need that we, we have and then how we're gonna pay for it. It's probably the most important thing that you guys are interested in. We also did get a, an eighty thousand dollar grant roughly to replace the exhaust collection system that's in the station. It's been broken for the better part of four or five months, so it's beyond repair, it's original to the building, so we were able to kinda. Push that off to the federal government, so that's good. If they ever open, they can give us the money. But, so that's the two grants that we'll be looking for, so. As we start, start to talk tonight, I just wanted to kinda refresh some of the history of how we kinda got here, so. One of the big things we talked about is healthcare capacity. That's one of the issues that really facing today is, is the lack of healthcare capacity. We're traveling further in terms of where we're going to bring patients to hospitals and, you know, and because of the capacity, sometimes the turnover times are longer too, so we can be tied up at the hospitals longer. So not only are we going further, we're tied up longer just because of the wait times and everything else. So I think, if you look here, we, these are the hospitals we had in the late nineties in the area. In southeastern Massachusetts, I think the, probably the, the most prominent was Southwood Hospital that, that closed in the early two thousands. And that was really great for Foxborough because it was right there. We could take calls right out of the emergency room, respond back to Foxborough and it was a great, it was a great benefit to the town and unfortunately that, that closed down. So when you think about, you know, the ambulance being at Mass General, we're not, we're not turning and taking a call back in Foxborough, but Southwood we could, so that was great. So when you look. Oh, there we go, great. So this is kinda what's left, this. What did she say?
I'm on the hall front chair.
Oh, all right. So we, we lost a bunch of capacity here, both in terms of distance and just, just healthcare capacity, so it does present a challenge for us. So in addition to all the building that's gone on Foxborough too with the, you know, we've had some pretty significant growth, you know, with 400 Foxborough Boulevard, 10 Fisher Street, we have Walnut Street coming online, so, you know, our, our population's increasing, our call volume's increasing, we have decreased capacity, so that's, that's one of the issues, like I said, so it's not, it's not a single, you know, it's not a single issue that's really driving our calls here. If you look, this is the projected population and I think the most important is the yellow. That's the population of people over eighty-five, so these, these are people that we deal with often, you know, these are probably the highest users of our service, especially in terms of ambulance. When we look at the projected people over eighty-five, it's gonna be fifteen million in twenty forty. So when you look at that compared to nineteen eighty, there was only two million, so the, the population is aging, but that particular demographic is really, really growing over the next ten years. So we're halfway to twenty forty essentially, or a quarter of the way there, so you're, you're seeing those people, you know, those, those are the people that really drive our service as well, so. Just know the kinda point.
You can leave the door open.
Yeah.
They can't hear as well back there.
I'll just give you the, all right. So, so this is kinda where we were in, in twenty twenty-one, so we had eight firefighters a shift, the town recognized the need, really coming out of COVID, we, we really kind of exploded with the run volume, we weren't able to really keep up, so if you could just hit that three times, that'd be great. So we, we added one firefighter a shift last year. One more time, there you go. Wow, and this is kinda where we stopped. Last year, we were proposed adding a, a, a fourth firefighter to each, you know, we added three firefighters, one extra firefighter to group four, that didn't happen, it was cut out of the budget last year, so that's kinda where we left it, so, seen it. So this is kinda how those people are staffed across, so we have one shift of eight, three shifts of nine, so when you see the, the primary engine, when we have the shift of nine, that would be one captain, two firefighters, one lieutenant, one firefighter, the ladder truck, two firefighter paramedics. And then two firefighter paramedic staff, a fire engine and an ambulance. And after COVID, really, we started to see a real increase in run volume and that utilization, that our utilization of the ambulance is really kinda what the, the turning point was, so that ambulance is gonna, I'll illustrate that in another slide, but, you know, that, that utilization is really, you know, going through the roof. So one of the things we saw, the need for is to staff a third ambulance and that's what we do with the ladder trucks, so we'll take the ladder truck out of service and run three ambulances, which again, is, is challenging and it's not optimal, but that's, that's what we have to do to answer the calls, so. So I think this is, this is a typical day, this is eight or nine firefighters, the, the next slide's gonna illustrate a, a day where we had eight firefighters on. So this is kind of a typical day, it's eight or nine firefighters. So we get the first call, the primary ambulance goes out, we get the second call, the second ambulance goes out, so now those, those four firefighters are committed, they're, they're responding, transporting to other hospitals. Then we get the third ambulance call, which happens frequently now, so we take the ladder truck out of service and that, and then you can. One of the issues that we have is thirty percent of our medical transports, because of the acuity of the patient, require three firefighters to transport, so we need two people in the back, whether it's a cardiac arrest, you know, serious trauma, motor vehicle accident, or somebody has a, you know, a angulated fracture or something, they need, you know, more sets of hands to kinda manage that, so. But that leaves like one person back, which again, is not optimal. Click it against, that, that one person now is kind of in the station by themselves responding in a pickup truck to calls, which again, it's not optimal. So what this, what this grant will do is that will give us, you know, some capacity internally to, to manage more incidents, so you'll see, you know, we can staff the engine, we can staff the ladder truck, so. That's kinda, that's kinda what the benefit of this grant is, so. So this is last Wednesday, this is a week ago, this is a list of calls, this is a sixteen hour snapshot of our responses and the important thing is if you look on the lower left, it, you know, the shift starts at eight o'clock, so our firefighters come in at eight, this particular shift was staffed with eight firefighters and you'll see it, at eight thirty, they get a run. And I, if you look, they transport to sturdy, they're available at ten twelve. If you go up to the next line at ten twenty, they have another medical call, that same ambulance responds. And then if you jump up to eleven forty-eight, so that ambulance comes in service at eleven twenty-eight, you see the next highlight, it gets the next call at eleven forty-eight. It's available at, uh, one thirty, if you go up at two o'clock basically, it gets another call. So if you, what this illustrates is, the primary ambulance for the town was available less than three hours in that sixteen hour period, it was gone, it just wasn't here. So it was either responding back to town or transporting people to hospitals, so like, you know, when we look at the complete firefighting force, you, we can almost discount those employees because they're just, they're busy doing ambulance calls, so they're not. But the other thing, if you look at, can you back up one? The red is when we had nobody available to go to calls and staff from an office had to go out and respond to a call and either meet an ambulance coming from sturdy, which is the first one there, or the second one was. Deputy Chief Grignier responded from home because he heard the call, knew Mansfield was coming in, so we called mutually twice that day, we called Mansfield and Walpole. Because one of the issues, we, somebody had a family emergency at, at two o'clock and they left, they came back at six, so we were actually down to seven firefighters at that point, so. Again, this is not an extraordinarily busy day, this is pretty typical, but just an example of how staffing impacts. So if we had ten firefighters on optimally, this, this wouldn't have happened, we wouldn't have had to call mutual aid, we would have had enough, you know, the people, the staff and respond to all the simultaneous calls that we had, but it's, it's pretty steady, the, the cadence of calls and this is pretty typical, so. Any questions so far?
Yeah, chief, chief, so when, when you have to call mutual aid, is, does that cost your department anything or, it's, it's just like they shift over, they've taken the call, so it gets billed out to them, other than maybe a lack of revenue if you, if you did have the people, really? And, um, okay, the other one was mutual aid too, okay. And the, and the, the opposite, how often are you able to provide mutual aid?
So it's a.
I mean, every, every day's gonna be different.
It's dynamic, so on this particular day, if you look, at, at two o'clock, we went to Sharon to help them because they were busy, so it's a, it's a mutual, so it's very, it's very fluid and dynamic.
Yeah.
We, we provide a lot of, you know, we provide mutual aid to rent them in Mansfield mostly, it's, it's geographic.
Yeah.
Most of our mutual aid's to rent them in Mansfield just because it's easy to get to. We go to Sharon, Sharon's not quite as busy as us, so, so they, and if you'll see in the, the next slide, you'll see they, they have pretty decent staffing for their call volume, so we don't, we don't go there as much, so if you wanna. So this is a, a, a view of our, our census, what we have per, per shift staffing, the number of fire stations and the twenty twenty-four call volume. So if you see, we're amongst the busiest, we're number three out of like the surrounding communities, you know, we're pretty, pretty close with Easton, but our shift staffing has kinda fell behind, so we're trying to keep pace with that. And again, looking down, looking in the future, anticipating run volume continuing to increase, which it has, if you look since two thousand nineteen, you know, we did thirty four hundred runs and, you know, we, we surpassed our two thousand nineteen call volume already, you know, it's October, so. Every year we're doing more and more runs, but they rarely go down, so. If you look at our mutual reliance on mutual aid, twenty twenty-two, we called forty-six times, twenty twenty-three, ninety-seven, twenty-four, a hundred and four, and this year, year to date, we've already called eighty-three, so that's, that's trending upwards too. So recognizing the trends, recognizing, you know, the, the staffing levels of area fire departments, and we're just trying to keep pace and provide a service, so. So any questions on any of the data? So a, as you know, we've been pretty fortunate, we've been able to identify some alternative revenue sources, we have the, the mechanic apparatus repair program, our ambulance receipts are in pretty good shape, we're, we're, we're working with finance, we believe that we can, I mean, Marie has, has bought into the fact that we can pay for this out of ambulance receipts, so this will not hit the taxpayer. This will be funded through the ambulance receipts and potentially our other alternative funding sources, but again, we recognize the financial position of the town and that this is not, you know, possible within the confines of the regular budget, so again, I think we get a jumpstart with the grant money and as the grant money tapers off, I think we're able to absorb it within the, within the budget of the ambulance receipts and the apparatus, the apparatus repair account, things like that.
So the payback would come at the end of the three years, the, the revenue that you're proposing between the ambulance receipts and the, the apparatus fix-it program will be, be paying for those positions at the end of the three-year grant?
Yes.
Yep. And the star under the Sharon thing for staffing?
Oh, Sharon also received this grant, so they'll be at nine firefighters per ship, so they've already accepted it. So they accepted it last week.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. So, um, I did take the time and I believe a number of you did as well, talked to a, a chief outside of this meeting to get our own feeling on things. I wanted to kinda share one thing and I had done this for a totally different purpose earlier this year and. When I went back and looked at the, the ambulance fund, in two thousand fourteen, we spent about five hundred and seventy-three thousand to fund operations out of that fund. We had spent just under thirty-five thousand for the capital. So our total was six hundred and seven thousand coming in from the ambulance. Obviously, since then, we've added staff, we've added ambulances as far as the number that we have in place. In two thousand twenty-four, one point eight million dollars of the operating expenses for the fire department were funded through the ambulance fund, six hundred and two thousand was funded, funded capital for a total of two point four million dollars. And based on what we're looking at now with, with FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six, FY twenty-five is just under two point seven million from this fund. And it has been the major source of all equipment replacement for the fire department, which again, would have been direct taxpayer money paying for it. So. The, the thing that I found interesting after our conversation and after reflecting on, on the data and stuff is that of all the departments in the town, this is the only department, and I'm not minimizing the value of any other department because every other department, schools, fire, I mean, police and, and so on, have a different structure. But this is the only department that actually has a revenue base which is based on staffing. So if, if we had even just two less, this, I could pretty much guarantee the EMS fund would be about half of what it is right now because they wouldn't be able to go out on the runs. It'd be mutual aid. Every time we use mutual aid for, for an ambulance, the other town is billing, they're getting the revenue, we're not getting it. And I'm not saying we have to get every penny that's out there, but I'm just saying that in, in the general sense, it's the one department that effectively can give us staffing for when we have our needs. But also can cover a lot of that cost and has paid a lot of the taxpayers funding. We would never have the equipment we have right now. I mean, the, the fact that we were able to, I don't wanna say prepay because we're, we're waiting for it to come in, but the, the new ladder, I believe, which is.
Engine.
Engine.
We actually, the same grant program, we had the ladder in twenty nineteen, that also helped.
Yeah, so I mean, we're, we're looking at, at funding that really has helped this community out well. And again, I, I do realize this is coming with a cost. They're not giving us one point four million dollars and three years, you know, four years from now, we're gonna pay, pay zero. But there is a great likelihood that based on the ability to continue to do, you know, more and more with the EMS side, and I do agree, part of the problem with that's going to be also be is the distance. I think that graph on the amount of, of what we've lost from a hospital point of view locally is just time. It's like what used to be a, an hour-long thing can now be a three-hour, you know, transition depending on where we have to go with the people. So I think, and I think that's gonna unfortunately continue to get worse. So I'm not a proponent normally of, of, you know, staff increases. Actually, when I first sat down with the chief, I was very blunt with him that I'm concerned about staff increases this way. But then again, I went back to my own notes and, and information on stuff that I had looked at personally on, on the finances of it. And we had, we had a good conversation and again, I think a lot of this data that you're seeing today, we, we talked about, which to me made a lot of sense. So I just wanted to add that in there because I think it's very important for our taxpayers to know that. We've literally gone from about six hundred thousand to almost three times, I mean, almost five times that as far as what we're funding and that is funding a lot of bodies. I mean, quite honestly, you know, putting a million eight into or a million nine into an operating budget that isn't covering benefits, payrolls and everything else, it's not, it's not covering, you know, pencils and, and stuff that way, so. It at least has a, a thing and then when we need staffing, we have staffing available to us. So I think, I think it is, it is something that, you know, merits a very significant consideration.
Well, I had an opportunity to speak with the chief at my request and I got information that certainly has, has helped me with the decision that I'm gonna make and he was very forthcoming. I even ventured there to the second station, if this was a buildup to the second station with added men and new, new equipment. And the answer is, they're not there, they're not there, but I was very grateful for that time with, with the chief and I, I, it, it's worked before when we did it with the three firemen in twenty-one.
Twenty eighteen, I believe, twenty nineteen?
Twenty eighteen, so every, it's historic that it's worked.
I had a chance to meet with the chief this morning too, and, you know, question I ask every year, I, I have, I have always had a problem with the ambulance receipts, not, not the, how they're working, they bring in a ton of money, but I always felt that as far as billing, when you, when you build, when you build out. For the, for residents, you know, for me, it felt like a user fee because I felt like if, you know, basically I said to him, if my house was on fire and you came, I don't get a bill. If I have to call my police department, I don't get a bill and, but. He cleared up a little bit for me today with letting me know that basically, and, and, and he also said he's going to be looking at those numbers because they haven't, the, what you've been billing out, you haven't raised in a long time. And we all know with healthcare, it just keeps, you know, getting higher and higher and I guess my, the concern I had was, you know, just like what it would mean to residents that have to call an ambulance, but he assured me that. When they send out a bill like, you know, say the bill's twenty-five hundred dollars, if you're on Medicare, Medicare's gonna pay a certain amount and the town is now accepting that as payment, there's not another bill sent out to, for the difference, you know. Um, you know, uh, in, in here, I'm on the, the town insurance. Blue Cross is very generous, you know, but not all insurances are. But he, he assured me that, um, and I don't have a problem taking what you can bill for. I mean, that, that would be a stupid comment to make. As long as the, the residents aren't then going to have more on top of that because their insurance or Medicare doesn't pay that. So that took care of all my, my issues as far as what the ambulance receipts being a user fee. So that's not how it is anymore. And, um, and the other thing that he did explain to me that technically municipalities don't have to provide ambulance service. It's not the same as, you know, if you're, you know, the trucks have to go out of fire. So the, the ambulance service isn't, um, he pretty much explained it that by us having it, it's, it's, it's getting us to, to that point, it's a benefit. And i- if, if we're just taking what insurance will pay, then, you know, I'm great with that. The other thing, just doing, I, I didn't factor in, um, you know, pension or insurance or anything, but just doing general numbers, it looks like, you know, if you divide the 1.4 by, by three years, it gives us, you know, roughly, you know, I came up with like 4, 466,000. Now you're dividing that by five guys, that's not, you know, it's not exact numbers. But based on what you're bringing in with the ambulance receipts, I, I believe we should be able to... And I know that number's good with raises and stuff, that number will always go up a little bit. But it, it looks like, you know, we're, we're only talking about maybe 500,000, and we're bringing in, and if we're doing another run, that will increase the ambulance receipt. So it's, um, it does, I, I think it does take care of your problems staffing-wise and, and the taxpayers aren't, you know, all of a sudden, it's not like as soon as they're gone, our taxes are going through the roof. So I was, I was really happy with the information that I got from you today. Always a pleasure to sit with you.
Yeah, um, I didn't call chief. But having dealt with chief over the last 10 years while I've been on the board, uh, it doesn't surprise me that, uh, that the plan is, is a, is a good, solid plan, good plan for the future of Foxborough, having dealt with this in the past. And, um, it totally amazes me, uh, the difference between where the hospitals were in, in 1990 versus today. Uh, and, and, and the fact that, uh, I think it's huge, the fact that an ambulance can be out for two hours, three hours versus 20 minutes, you know, 20 years ago, uh, and, and the rides are longer. Uh, and we're providing a lot more than we were even 10 years ago. You know, Patriots Place was there, but not the hospital. And all the big growths that we have around the town. And one of them, our patient population is getting older, or our town population is getting older. So a lot more, we baby boomers are, are kicking it. And, uh, you know, we're around and, uh, we're living longer and, yeah, a lot more. So I, I'm all for it.
I, I, I just wanted, before Amy, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Want to double up on that though, because one of the things that I don't think many taxpayers or all taxpayers know is the, what our force is like. Um, obviously, we've gone from EMTs to paramedics, uh, with all of our staffing. Um, so when we talk about providing service, the service level that we provide, uh, through your department now has also increased over the years. So I think that is something that's also a huge benefit to any resident. Um, and again, we have that because in some senses, we have the ability to afford it. Um, so I think that's, uh, it's a really valid point that needs to kind of be put out there. That this is no longer, you know, somebody shows up and they're going to throw you in an ambulance and hope they can get you to the hospital fast enough and, and see what they're going to do. I think a lot of, you know, uh, years ago, when I had even a treatment for something happening at my, our house with my son, the amount of, you know, first of all, they were there quick, and second of all, their ability to, uh, deal with, uh, you know, a cut that was pretty deep and stuff, very quickly and get them to the hospital, um, you know, was, was amazing to me. And that was before you even got to this point of the, the level that you have now. So I think, I think taxpayers also have to understand that that's out there as a, uh, as a major benefit in our resource. Amy?
How do I follow all of them? I, I appreciate, I did meet with you also, um, about a week ago, and I do appreciate you taking the time, answering my questions. Um, you have a history of coming here and, you know, standing by your word and, and bringing the data, and I really appreciate that, so.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
I have one other thing I wanted to add. Um, if, if you haven't had to call an ambulance, whi- which is wonderful, okay? If you haven't had to, um, you know, for our family, you know, not too long ago, we were, we were frequent flyers all of a sudden, which we didn't have to. But the, the one thing I, I really did learn from that is, you know, my husband was a complicated patient, right? So having, you know, if, if he was in any danger, he was going to, to either Sturdy or the Good Samaritan. But with, um, your staff being able to evaluate what was going on, the best place for him was his hospital at Tufts because he was a transplant patient with lots of complications. So by having just that little bit of window, and, and, and I, I know if they thought, you know, or we can't get him to Tufts, he was going to one of those, but they were able to, to evaluate and, and not worry that there wasn't another ambulance to go, to go out. And luckily for us, we were, we were actually making phone calls at like 2:00 AM. So it was like, not, not, you know, not, emergencies happen all the time, but we weren't so, so busy. And, um, the, the other thing, I'm going to probably turn to Paige. Um, the, the, obviously Bill ran numbers, said numbers, but one of the important things too is, um, Marie has looked at all this. So I'll, I'll pass to you just maybe what you want to add, her, you know, her looking at the numbers, what she felt about us accepting this grant.
Sure, so we, when we first heard the news, everybody says, this is great. And then, and the next question is, how are we going to pay for it and what does this mean? Because everybody loves free firefighters, but what do we do? Once you have them, you don't want to let them go again. So, um, and Mike can attest to this, we immediately called a team meeting, you know, with Marie and Brandon and the chief, and we sat down and trouble shot it. And we basically said, you got to come up with a plan and do it. And so he did, and Marie has bought into it and ran the numbers and checked his balances. And so we do feel confident moving forward. But that was our first thing is, you know, free money isn't always free, and we wanted to make sure we could continue the service and not, um, you know, at the detriment of the taxpayers and not something that we couldn't sustain long-term. And we can with the, and as we've all acknowledged, this program, the, the innovation that comes out of this team is, is really second to none. So we have full faith that, that we will be able to carry this forward. And, um, again, having that ambulance ability is just, is such a, a benefit to this community. I mean, I don't live in this community, and whenever I hear the presentations, I'm always like, darn. I hope I have that because just even, you know, what Tom Kenvin's brought to the team and, and just the advanced life support that this team is doing. You want these ambulances in town, you want the staff, they're all qualified to save your life or your loved one's life. So we were going to do everything we could to make it work, and, and we, we have.
Great.
Motion?
Yep.
Uh, motion?
Do the, do the, um, ambulance one first, so 5.2.
Sure. Motion to accept $1,399,125.95 staffing for adequate fire and emergency response safer grant.
Second.
Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
O's, hearing none. You want to go on to your second grant?
Sure, this is just the, uh, this is the exhaust reclamation system. So that's going to replace the current system that we have. So I believe there's a $6,000 match that we're going to, we're going to match this to get the 82,000. I'm not sure what the actual number is.
76?
76,000.
I, actually, I was remiss on one thing because you brought it up and, and we should have, we've had the benefit of obviously having the conversation, so I want to make sure, again, taxpayers get this. So the point that you brought up on the mechanics bay and what we've turned that into as far as, or what you've turned that into, um, as far as, um, you know, and also a revenue stream. So based on the conversation you and I had, uh, obviously, we have a full-time mechanic who is kind of the, the god of the department in that area and controls that. But also you have six other firefighters that have varying degrees of ability to help with that. Um, not only are we able to handle our own equipment, which is obviously, um, a huge benefit. I know years ago, before we even built the building and we were having these conversations, um, it was a problem getting service. And that's quite honestly why we built the, the service bay the way we did. Um, I thought there was a lot of good foresight back then, but I never ever thought it would turn out to be obviously what it is today. Um, my point on that is that this now is a, a source of revenue to the town, uh, through the, through the department that's, um, probably going to net close to half a million dollars, um, after expenses, which can go a long way towards equipment as well in the future. So there's, the department keeps morphing in what it's capable of doing. Obviously, we benefit because our equipment is always taken care of. Other communities are getting a benefit, but we're charging for it and, and, and recouping money for taxpayers again that will stay within, uh, that department as far as what we have for equipment. Um, so I, 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 we missed kind of expounding upon what you were saying, but I think it's very important that taxpayers understand that not only do we have, you know, a fund that's obviously paying a lot of the operational side and a lot of the CIP, but we've now got a secondary fund, um, that also seems to be very successful and growing. So, um, and that's, again, within one department. Most, no other department has that ability to kind of, to do that type of stuff. So I, I kind of praise you on how you've done that. So as far as this, as you said, that, the building was built, like, I should know this, but...
We opened it '07.
'07, yeah. So, um, this is an, obviously, an older unit. It is, basically, all it is is a, uh, a section of hoses that connect to your equipment, sucks the air out of the, the building so that fumes don't stay in there when the trucks are running or idling. Um, and, you know, obviously, things don't last forever. So the fact that there's a grant that's going to basically, uh, nearly pay for the whole thing, I think, is, uh, is a great... Were there any strings to this at all, or was strictly a...
No, it was, it, we were fortunate because it, it broke just as we were, we were going to put in for capital.
Yeah.
And then we, we got the, we got indication that we were going to get the grant. So we, you know, we, we didn't, it won't be on the capital, uh, in the springtime meeting. So it was just, it's just one more thing off that list.
So the, the only thing that I, um, before, yeah, before we vote on this, the only thing I want to say is going forward, I think, and, and obviously, you have no idea when you're going to get these grants or if you're going to get these grants, which is, that's comparable in every other department applies for a grant. But especially some of these larger ones like this 1.4 million, I think it would be nice if we got heads up sooner so that people could get more comfortable. I, I applaud the committee being able to take the time and sit down and, and make sure we had our answers, um, you know, as far as, uh, coming into this. Because coming into a meeting and just thinking you're going to get everything you need to know and feel comfortable, it doesn't really typically work, so. Um, but, you know, I think, again, you know, a selling point to taxpayers is the fact that sometimes we discuss these things, even if it doesn't happen, that it's on the horizon and there's a poss- possibility of it, I think will make people feel a little bit more comfortable that we're, you know, in the know before, uh, we get to this point. So that's all I got to say on that, as far as the motion.
Can I, Mike, did you say that, um, the, the second grant, did you say that, is this, um, will, will the government have to be open? Did you mention, did you say something? Oh, oh, yeah, I, okay, well, I, well, I, that's why, I thought you kind of said, if, you know, if everything opens. So bas- basically, um, your equipment, I mean, hopefully, it's going to be sooner than later, right? So obviously, you've been, it's, you, you've gotten the grant, we, we, we're going to vote.
They'll accept it, so, yeah.
Yeah, so it'll just be kind of the wait game to see when it actually, the funds get, get to.
Yeah.
Get to us.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's all, it's kind of, we're all kind of waiting.
Fingers crossed, right?
Motion?
Motion to accept $76,181.81 FEMA assistance to firefighter's grant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
O's, hearing none.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Good job.
Thank you. Great job, guys.
With all your good support. A big shout out to all of you, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Bye, guys, thank you.
See you at town meeting.
And the breakfast.
And the breakfast.
Victoria Allen is here, so we don't have to wait till 8 o'clock. Thank you, Victoria, for raising, oh, I guess it is 8.
It's 8. Step forward.
She did get here a bit early. We were worried, we didn't, we didn't want to have to filibuster any longer.
We could have kept the other guy here from Angel's Cafe, I think he would have.
He was good entertainer.
Entertained.
Yeah, he could have come back.
He should have brought us some samples.
Just please, uh, give us your, uh, name and, and stuff so that we can have it on the record.
Sure, so I'm Christina LaRose, Director of Clinical Services for Foxborough Public Safety.
Hi, I'm Victoria Allen, I'm the new, uh, Community Substance Use Coordinator for the town.
So why don't you give us a little background on what's going on and how we got here?
Sure, so we got here, uh, through the opioid abatement funds. Uh, we identified a need in town, really highlighting the work that I'm doing with the public safety between fire and police. I think there's, there's a gap there, uh, in regards to substance use coordination and, and my availability. So I heard from police and fire, you know, it's great having you, but once you leave at 6 o'clock, uh, you know, we feel guilty calling you back. We, there's stuff that comes up when you're not available, you're on vacation. Um, and then I just noticed in my own caseload, there's stuff that you, you have to decide now, okay, this is going to take priority over this other stuff. So, um, I, I think once we highlighted that need and we figured out where we can get the money from, we met with health department, um, and we worked with them to kind of coordinate a good plan to use some of the substance use fund, uh, where we both kind of made our, our agenda and our goals. Um, I think we were both able to kind of come out of that and, um, get exactly what we wanted. So, uh, through that process, we interviewed several candidates and we, uh, we found Victoria to be a good match in terms of personality. I think she's going to work really well and fit in with both the police and fire. I think that's a big, huge part of it. You can be super qualified and maybe just not mesh with the two groups. And, and I think the population that we're meeting with is really specific as well. Um, so I think that all tied in and her availability, uh, to do some nights and weekends is there. So, uh, ideally, we're going to augment what I'm already doing, she's going to kind of duplicate some of that. And I work 10 to 6, Monday through Friday, so, um, I'm going to let Victoria talk a little bit more about her schedule and kind of what we have planned, but I think some of the evening schedule is going to get taken up. We'll have some overlap to do some joint things, um, and then get a little bit of weekend coverage in that as well.
Can you give us a little background too?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Um, so I, I grew up in this town, so I have, um, a lot of love and respect for, you know, the community and, uh, happy to be able to give back. Um, I'm finishing up my master's in social work in just a couple of weeks, actually. Um, so I think right now, what we're doing with the role, I've been doing some shadowing with Christina, doing some onboarding, um, been reaching, reaching out to, um, treatment centers and resources in the area, building, you know, some contacts and some relationships with, um, services we can, uh, recommend to folks. We can, um, we found that, you know, when you have a personal relationship or when you have built that rapport with, um, services in the area, then it, it's easier to kind of work with folks, uh, when they're ready and, and would like to take advantage. So right now, we've been doing some co-response, uh, with the police and fire departments. I think, um, also what we'll do, William James College has a, um, five-day intensive, um, crisis response program that we just missed the enrollment for just this time, but it, it's coming back to this area in the winter. So I'll plan to do that, um, gain some more experience in that particular, you know, type of work, um, continue to respond with police and fire, um, on mental health calls, substance use calls, domestic violence. Uh, a lot of these things kind of work, you know, together and it don't really exist in isolation. So I think the, um, the wraparound with that, it'll be a lot of substance use, but a lot of that stuff does come with, um, mental health as well. So being able to kind of support Christina's role, um, maybe offer some more follow-up, um, some more resources to, you know, folks who, who are looking to access them, some case management, um, stuff would be helpful. We're also planning to, you know, look into the call log and see, do kind of a needs assessment on what is missing or what we could, what we could do to better help the community, um, with the issues that the police and fire department are seeing.
Paige, can you remind me on this, the, the opioid thing originally didn't fund the full thing, um, that we were looking for, but how has it been resolved?
So we're still on the part-time model. As you recall, there was a needs assessment done by the health department, and they wanted not all the funds to go towards a staff person. They wanted other resources like training and whatnot. So we, we've moved forward with that, and Victoria is fulfilling that part-time role. What we hope to see down the road, and obviously, subject to it working out personnel-wise, is, um, one of the articles on town meeting has to do with capturing some administrative fees associated with a public health grant. That's going to equal about $48,000 that we've collected from the state that we haven't in the past. So this now, we've been working with the health department, this would now go into the health department's budget to allow them to do those items that they fought hard for, like Narcan training, Sharps... hard for, like Narcan training, Sharps disposal, the CARE-SALAS program, whatnot. So that would then take care of that. Then our strategy is to hopefully move towards using all of the opioid settlement fund towards this type of position and ultimately move to full-time. But we're not quite there yet. We hope to evolve into that because we know there is such a demand with the public safety department and with Christina only being one human who works extraordinary hours, but we don't want to burn her out. So we're slow-walking to that, but we do see a path forward to be able to expand the substance abuse program to full-time.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Welcome.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
I know how fortunate to find a Foxborough gal to join our team.
Well, we appreciate you, you and us, to come into this role. And the fact that the two of you are working well together, I think that's going to be critical. And as you said, working with the two departments is key because that's where a lot of departments are falling down now, not having these resources. So appreciate you coming on.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you both.
We have anything else? I don't think so.
We're done.
I think we're done.
We're done.
Is there another motion you'd like to give?
Sure, would love to give a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.